Good evening, everybody. It is May 24th. It's a little bit past 7 o'clock and...
March.
March, excuse me, yeah. I'm hoping it's May. If you're watching us live, you can see that we're complying to the social distancing ultimatum from the governor. I'll give a quick roundup. Sean Harris is over there to my right. I'm over to the left. Maura Kern's in the audience. And then there's five other people. Lorraine, Michelle, Nancy, Jim, and Mike are all here spaced off across the room. We have nine people in the room, and that's all we can have. The other two selectmen, Karen Conley and Karen Canfield, are both on the speakerphone. So they've dialed into the meeting. And then also...
All participants are muted.
Also, the people that are presenting tonight are as well. I'm going to read a quick statement from the governor real quick. So, and what we're doing. "In response to Governor Baker's declaration of a public meeting emergency and related emergency executive order dated March 12th, the town of Situate Public Meeting shall be remotely until further notice. This meeting will be recorded by Situate Community Television and can be viewed live on cable TV Channel 9, and will be posted on our website the next day. Participation by the public for the public hearing Wind Turbine -- public hearing and the Wind Turbine Report will be available via the audio conference bridge. If you wish to participate..." This all went out in the agenda, but I'm going to -- I'll give you the numbers real quick. "If you want to participate for the hearing on the Hibernian Tavern, the new liquor license, at 7:15 or so, and then 7:30 for the Wind Turbine, you'll call the following numbers: And then you'll put an access code of 817-651."
Pound sign.
Pound sign. Thank you, Lorraine. So, Lorraine and Michelle have been getting this up and going. We're working out the kinks now, but they're doing end mic as well. Thank you. So bear with us during this time. It'll get better each time, but it's going pretty well right now. For all of you going -- you said it too fast, I didn't get it right down. I will give you the number again. So the number to call is 425-436-6308. You can also dial 6338 or 6300 on the end. And then the access code is 817-651, pound sign. Okay. And then Michelle is in here, and she's kind of monitoring the flow of calls, and she'll be getting you in order, and we'll be accepting your calls that way. So, that being said, clearly, we're all going through new procedures and just new times for all of us personally and in-town government. I want to thank all of you that are participating. I want to thank Jim for leading the ship through this. You've worked endless hours to get us up and going. We're trying to figure out the right direction as the rules change every day. And he's working with keeping all the services the best we can and keeping all of our employees healthy. So that -- you're doing a great job of that. And so is everybody else in the building in every department. Are you -- you're going to go over the changes in the department in your report? Good, so I won't duplicate that.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. We just have to do an acceptance of the agenda.
Sure. I'll get to that in one second. And again, if you want to call in, Michelle will be handling that sort of stuff. So, at this point in time, I'd like an acceptance of the agenda.
So moved.
And second?
Moved by Maura Kern, second by Sean Harris. All in favor? And all votes will be a roll call this evening because Karen 1 and Karen 2 are not present.
So, Mr. Vignali?
Yes.
Which one am I? Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Okay. So that's unanimous exceptions of the agenda. And I'll turn it over to the town administrator for his report.
So, most of my report is obviously COVID-19-related. As Tony said, we want to thank all the residents for their cooperation during what is really unprecedented times. Also, our town departments, town employees, picking our first responders for all their doing, the dedication, their service. As people are aware, the governor has closed all nonessential business as of noon time today through April 6th of 2020. This order does not apply to supermarkets, gas stations, and pharmacies, restaurants that provide take-on delivery, may also continue to do so as long as they follow DPH protocols. In response to this, the town has gone to what we call a minimal staffing model. Departments are required to have those staff required to do the essential job functions and to provide a minimal amount of service to the public. Do either report to work to do those functions or to work remotely if capable. Essential employees are being told by each department that they need to be staggered. So if we have two people in the treasurer's office that do payroll, they don't work on the same day because we want to keep them separated. The DPW, we've already gone to an A/B schedule with the DPW. Water and sewer, the plant operators are already on alternating schedules in those departments to keep them separate. People are checking their emails. Every employee of the town hall has the ability to get their email remotely from home. They'll check their messages. They'll be on an as-needed basis. Inspections are ongoing. We are still doing that. MLC, we do outside inspections. If we have to do an inside inspection, the inspector will go into the house by himself. There will be no one else in the house with him. It is up to the inspector whether or not they wish to do those inspections. But we will do the best we can to maintain our services. We are still picking up the drop box. Anything dropped outside, we'll still get. You can get your transfer station stickers online. I know the treasurer said she -- they were swamped the other day with online sticker applications. Those come in, they process, and they mail them out to you as quickly as possible. I think the one thing I can tell people that I know is the big question at Situate, yes, the transfer station is open. It is open normal hours. We ask that when you go there. You don't dally. You keep your social distancing and get in and get out so we can keep those employees healthy and keep that moving. Right now, as of this afternoon, we have four cases in Situate. We picked up two more today statewide. The number of cases, it went up over 300 people from yesterday to today. We're almost up to 1,200, as we talked about yesterday on our update. Those numbers are going to keep going up as we expand testing. This does not necessarily mean that more people have the COVID-19 virus, but we are identifying those people that actually do have. I believe the state has opened a drive-through testing facility now over at Southfield and South Weymouth. However, you cannot go over yourself and decide you want to get tested for coronavirus, COVID-19. You have to be referred there by a physician, and then you go over and they will test you. But you can't drive over and say, "I don't feel well. I want to get tested." We ask that if you haven't already done so, sign up for our code RED on the town websites that we can get out notices to you. We have posted the town meeting warrant for the 13th of April as we always do. This is to make sure we have met all the legal requirements of posting town meeting. Once the legislation allowing the moderator to postpone that for public health reasons is signed by the governor, we will have the moderator postpone town meeting probably to a date in May. The board had already voted to reschedule the town election. That legislation is pending for the legislature. At this point, I think it's gotten lost in the COVID-19 wash-up there. But they have passed a overarching piece of legislation that applies to the entire state. So at our next meeting, the board will have to vote again to postpone the election from the 25th of May to the 13th of June under the new legislation as opposed to the legislation that we filed to get that all up and running. People with updates, you can go to -- call 211. You can go to mass211 or mass.gov and get your updates. We will update on our website as much as possible. The other question that I answered yesterday, I will answer again. People are wondering why the golf course is closed to walkers. That is because the maintenance crews are out on the golf course getting the golf course ready as if we were going to open. We have to do those things or else the golf course -- we will lose the golf course in terms of the greens, things like that. So in order to maintain the golf course, we have to get it ready to open, whether we're going to open it or not based on what's going on. So the golf course is closed to walkers because we are doing the maintenance on it as we would normally do to get it ready for a spring opening.
Great. Any questions for Jim? I'll start with Sean.
Jim, you touched on it a little bit, but if a resident should need emergency personnel, health, you know, what should they do? What should they say that might be different now than it was a month ago?
Okay. If they're calling 911, the dispatchers have a new protocol for the 911, and they will ask a series of questions about what is your condition. If it has any of the major symptoms of what is COVID-19, then that changes how those
Response.
-- those people respond. Right now, I believe the fire department, all responses are being done with PPE equipment on the fire department. Because people are asymptomatic and they can still transmit COVID-19. But if you have fever, headache, body aches, chills, sore throat, they will ask you respiratory issues. They will ask you those questions, and then they will respond appropriately.
Great. Thanks.
Karen Conley, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good, thank you. Thanks for the updates on video, Jim and Karen.
And Karen Canfield?
No questions, thank you.
Maura?
I'm all set, thanks.
Good. So, Jim, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Karen Conley just alluded to that we are starting to do more public service videos and shows for you guys so that you can get more daily updates in terms of what's going on with the town because in this situation, everything is changing by the day. So I'm going to repeat the phone number one more time if you wanted to participate and you missed it. It's 425-436-6308 and then 817-651, pound. Okay. We're going to move on to our first topic, which is the acceptance of a donation from the Beautification Commission. Is Leslie calling in or no?
No.
Okay. So, this is a donation in the amount of $500 from Charles and Lena Pollard to the Beautification Commission. So, any questions? If not, I'll take a motion to accept the donation.
Moved that the board of selectmen accepted donation in the amount of $500 from Charles and Lena Pollard to the Situate Beautification Commission.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Kern, second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
We're going to do a roll call.
Mr. Vignali?
Yes.
Roll call.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
So thank you to the Pollard family for that generous donation.
Very nice.
The next topic, and it is just a little bit past 7:15, is a public hearing and discussion and a vote for a new liquor license for the Hibernian Tavern. And we have Michael and Arlene -- oh, sorry, Michael Carlisle and Arlene McClay. And is their attorney online as well?
Is Carolyn Conley?
Arlene and Michael, can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay. I don't believe your attorney's on the line.
I actually did receive a message from her saying that the PIN she was given was wrong. So I'm going to try and email her a new one. Could you repeat it for me, please?
Okay.
Oh, it is a different PIN. Should I just get her number and we can text her? Okay. Could you provide that number to me, Arlene?
Wait.
Oh, how do we do that?
Her cell phone number?
Just give her the PIN number to send her.
Well, that's going to -- we can't. That's going to...
No, we can't.
Actually, get her phone number. I'll call her. Can you give us her number, Arlene? And we'll give her a call and give her the PIN.
Yeah, I'm just going to try and pull it up. Sorry.
No?
Yeah, I'm just going to try and pull it up. Sorry.
Okay. No worries.
If they want.
I mean, she could call in without the PIN, but then she'd have to put herself in the queue. I'll step out and give her a call.
Do you want to do with the PIN? I'll just turn the mic off. Actually, the only time she needs a PIN is if she's going to participate during questions and answers. Where this -- you can actually go and unmute her microphone. So if she dials in as a participant, it should be okay.
Okay. All right. So have her call in the number 425-436-6308 with the access code 817-651, pound. And if you can give me just her last four, I can unmute her.
All right. I actually find her cell phone number if you want to call her. That'd be there.
Okay, sure.
All right.
Okay. Why? Okay. I'll step out. You guys can start the discussion.
Yeah. So we can just talk in general terms. Who is going to speak? Michael or Arlene? Just give us a little bit of background of where you're going, what you're doing, and some overview of your plans.
Sure.
And just speak loudly if you can.
Sorry. Myself and Arlene have been in the business, you know, combined about 50 years. And we've worked together probably for about 20. And when we heard that this was becoming available in Situate, we both kind of jumped on it because, you know, both being from Ireland, we wanted to bring our own Irish style to the town. You know, we wanted to do like Irish entertainment, Irish food. It's not been done in Situate. And I think we bring a lot to the town. The Irish entertainment, the end of it, you know, we're going to do sessions during the day, like Saturday and Sunday. We go along with brunch, and then we'll have the live entertainment Friday, Saturday night. We have a chef who is going to put his own flair on Irish food. The bar itself will have its own Irish distinction. You know, me being from Dublin and Arlene from Donegal, we mix all that together. So I think it will be great benefit to the town, and, you know, we're really looking forward to it.
Great. So, Michael, just -- we know, but they don't. So this is going in the space that used to be the Silent Chef?
Yes.
So right on Front Street? And it's going to be called the Hibernian Tavern?
Yes.
And it sounds like it's going to be an Irish pub?
It is going to be an Irish pub.
Great. That serves food and has some entertainment?
Yes.
How many seedings will there be?
We're looking for like, I think it's 40 on the floor and about 15 at the bar.
Okay. And give us a little bit of background. Where have the two of you worked before?
Okay.
Or most recently?
I started working for the Glen Company back in, I think it was 1986. At that time, they owned like the Black Roses, the Purple Shamrock, to just name a few. And I worked with them up till, what was it, 1999, I think it was. Then I moved over to the Summers Group, which owns Mr. Dooley's, Hennessy's, the Green Dragon, Patiols. And I was with them for 19 years.
And what did you do for them?
I was in charge of, you know, all personnel, kitchen, waitstaff, bar staff, security. And I was also in charge of the entertainment. So that's, you know, that's what I did with the Summers. I oversaw basically everything at nighttime. Then I moved on, and at the moment now, I'm at the Red Lion in Cohasset.
Oh, great.
So that's basically what I've been doing. I let Arlene jump in there. She can explain what she's been doing.
Yeah. So I started with Summers Pub in 2001 in the Green Dragon Tavern just outside Final Hall. That's where myself and Michael were acquainted. I then moved from the city to Mr. Dooley's in Cohasset, I believe, in 2011. And I've been there since 2011 until I recently finished up just before Christmas in 2019.
Great.
I managed -- sorry.
Good. And you both are partners in this venture?
Yes, correct.
Great. Okay. Is the attorney called in or...
You just got off the phone with Lorraine.
Okay.
And I know we're going to ask, what's your timetable for opening?
Well, that all depends on -- we were looking for kind of mid-May to the end of May, but that's not going to happen. It'll be basically based upon, you know, whatever the governor says or whatever the town of Situate says because, you know, these are -- right now, we're not good times, and we just want everybody to be safe. And when everybody feels that, you know, we can open, that's when, you know, we'll open. But not until, you know, we think everybody's going to be fine.
Great. Great. Sean, do you have any questions?
No. The hours, well, I guess you could talk a little bit about your hours if you didn't mind.
Sure.
1 a.m., so you're going to provide breakfast, obviously, to 1 a.m. in the morning?
Well, the last meeting we had, they gave us a list, which, you know, we abide by, whatever the town, you know, wants us to do. We are hoping to do breakfast. And, you know, we're going to try our best to do breakfast. We're definitely going to do it on the weekends. You know, it's kind of hard to find staff at the moment. But they gave us the hours of like 8 to 1 Friday, Saturday, 10 to 12 -- no, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong ones. 8 to 11 Friday, Saturday, Sunday, 11 to 11 Monday through Thursday. That's for the kitchen. If we do breakfast, I'd expect us, you know, it'd be 8 o'clock every morning. Then on the bar itself, they said 8 to 1 Friday, Saturday, 10 to 12 Monday through Thursday, and 10 to 1 on Sunday. The entertainment, we're looking at, this is what they gave us, but it's not what we're going to, you know, we're not going to be looking for, but like 9 a.m. to 12 a.m. 9 a.m., I don't see us doing anything like that. But it'd be nice to have that, just if there's special events or something like that.
Right. I can only hear the attorney. Probably just for the -- like the non-live entertainment.
Yes. Yeah. Sorry, yes.
TVs, radio, that kind of thing.
Yes.
They don't need a license.
We don't need a license for that.
You don't need a license for that. Great. Okay. So, I'm sure we want to talk about these hours because...
Yes.
So you're saying that the hours that we gave -- or someone gave you, are they -- where did you get those hours from? They're just earlier?
Town meeting.
No, I actually think I made a mistake. The county, I believe, the hours were to be 7 a.m. to 1 a.m. Friday to Sunday, and 10 a.m. to 12 a.m. Monday to Thursday, with rest and Irish, and 8 a.m. to 11 p.m. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. I think when I type this up, my apologies, I looked it in the wrong way around.
Before we talk about them, can you expand on the entertainment? Is that going to be amplified or is that just acoustic?
The sessions will be acoustic. That's what we think they're doing on Saturdays and Sundays. That's to go along with the brunch. At nighttime, it'll be like two-piece to four-piece live Irish bands. You know, it double-range from acoustic to amplified.
And it will all be inside?
Yes.
Karen Conley, I'll go to you next. Do you have any questions?
No, I think it'd be a nice addition to the town. I have business on Front Street.
Yes. How about Karen Canfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think you couldn't find a better fit for our community or for some of the efforts we're going to be making to try to draw people downtown. It's a perfect fit. I think the hours requested are aligned with other businesses in town. And I think that in the process, going through the planning process and everything, they've answered all the questions I would have normally. So, you know, I wish them Godspeed and hope that they can open soon.
Great. Maura?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with both Karen's and Sean. I am so happy that this business is coming down there, but I do want to take a look at the hours. I think the proximity of this particular establishment is a little bit closer to residents. And I know in the past couple of years, we've had to deal with some noise issues and complaints from the galley. So I would propose that the liquor and entertainment hours align with what we've approved for the galley in the past. So what those hours are from a liquor aspect is Monday through Friday, 10 a.m. to 1 a.m. Saturday and Sunday from 11 a.m. to 1 a.m. And then the entertainment would go Sunday through Thursday from 12 p.m. to 10 p.m. And I think that's key, you know, not going past midnight because they are right there next to residences. And then Friday and Saturday night, they could go till 12 a.m. So I would like the board to discuss that a little bit further.
Could I ask a question? Along those lines, Michael, do you plan on renovating the storefront that would like open it up like a New Orleans style? To Maura's point, she raises a very good point. If you have music within your establishment and the doors are closed, I don't -- obviously, it's not going to -- the noise is not going to travel as far unless you have accordion-style doors in the front and you want to open it up, then -- or in the back or on the rooftop or whatever, the noise is going to travel a lot further. I did look at your plans, and it seemed to stay in the same footprint. Could the entrance in the back of the building, is that going to somewhat remain the same so the noise would be contained within the building?
The noise, let me give you, for instance, what we used to do in Boston. Most of the bars that we have in Boston all had open fronts. But it was an agreement with the City Hall at that time, at a certain time, you had to close your windows. So, for instance, if we're going to have entertainment, you know, whatever it is inside, we have to close the windows. So that way, you know, there'd be no noise emanating from the -- shouldn't be any noise emanating from the building. After, you know, the stipulation in Boston was like 11. But what we can do is, because we have neighbors, we can say, "Okay, we're going to close the windows at 9 before entertainment starts." So that should alleviate, you know, any problems against the noise.
Okay. Maura, can you repeat those hours? Because I agree with you.
Sure.
So let's go with the liquor license first. So Monday through Thursday?
It was Monday through Friday, but we could do Thursday. The galley's 10 a.m. to 1 a.m.
Okay.
And then Saturday and Sunday night, it's 11 to 1. It's a little different than what Mr. Carlisle's...
And then entertainment?
May I ask, so, I mean, it's because it does a lot early.
I'm sorry, we didn't hear you? And just say who you are also.
She's still there.
We'll get back to her. Maura, what was your entertainment suggestion?
Sunday through Thursday.
I was saying for the...
Oh. She is trying. Attorney Conway, can you hear?
Yes.
Okay. You're fading in and out. I'm not sure.
Cell phone signal.
Yeah, it might be your signal.
Yeah.
Can she dial in on a landline?
Yes. Great.
Do you want to try and dial in on another line?
Attorney Conway, we'll get to you in one second. Maura, what were you saying?
You want an entertainment, right?
Entertainment?
Entertainment was Sunday through Thursday, 12 p.m. to 10 p.m.
Yeah.
And then Friday and Saturday nights, 12 p.m. to 12 a.m. That's the galley. And then Riva...
He was 12 to 12. He was 12:00 to 12:00.
River Entertainment, River Entertainment on Sundays goes to 10:00, 10:00.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at River Club.
Could I suggest, Maura, if you look at Rivershed, you know, just a couple, I know, a couple of blocks below.
Yep.
Their liquor goes from 11:00 to 1:00, oh, that's Monday through Saturday, and indoor, on the entertainment, 9:00 AM to 12:00. You couldn't be any more around residents than that place as well. And that's indoor, if they keep it indoor. I just wonder if we could be a little consistent, more consistent. But can I say something else?
Yeah.
Mike, if you can hear me, you know, if you've ever, well, this is not your first time at this, and, you know, we wish you all the best, but if I, I'm speaking for myself, but I've heard Mr. Vignani say many, many times, you know, we give you this entertainment license, and we hear from the butters and neighbors that, you know, they're being up, you know, they're being, you know, bothered at night, then, you know, we're gonna call you right in. That's, you know, not our intention. So, and I know you wanna be a good neighbor too, 'cause you'll want those neighbors to come to your establishment. So I know I, you know, preach another choir, but I just wanted to say that, 'cause I, you know, I just kinda beat Tony to the punch. She says it every time, that's all.
Yeah, but we're willing to work with anybody. You know, if there's a problem, it'll be dealt with straight away. It's always been the way we've worked. You can ask anybody in, you know, in the town that has Mr. Dooley's and all that. You know, never been a problem. You know, we're very good friends, the fire chief, the police, never had a problem, you know, so, and if there is, it'll be sorted right away.
Great. So are you, and I'll let your attorney speak when she gets back on, are you fine with, I guess my concern is work nights having entertainment past 10, which Maura brought up, and then on the weekends going to 12. If it was 12:00 to 10:00, and then 12:00 to 12:00 on Saturday and Sunday for entertainment, and then liquor would be 10:01 and 11:01 on Monday through Thursday, and then Saturday through Sunday? I think it's Sunday through...
Sunday they can start at 10:00.
What about Friday?
Friday for which one? Friday would be 10:01.
What do you have for entertainment?
10:01 for liquor.
What do you have for entertainment?
Entertainment 12:00 to 12:00.
Okay, yes, okay.
Yeah.
I guess my only thought is the brunch.
Yeah.
If we wanted to start it at like 11:00 or something, what time would you do like a brunch at 11:00?
10:00.
Maybe 10:00.
Usually start at 10:00.
It usually start at 10:00, but we probably start the music at 12:00. But this would be acoustic, it's not gonna be amplified. It's like, if you ever saw before, it's just a couple of musicians sitting around, like playing accordions or violins, and, you know, guitars.
Okay, so do you want, Maura, do you wanna make that 10:00 or 11:00?
It's more of a sing-along than anything else.
Maura, do you wanna change that to 10:00 or 11:00 for Saturday and Sunday entertainment AM?
I mean, 10:00 AM's fine, that way it gives him time to get it up and running by 11:00, right? He's probably not gonna bring it in till 11:00 anyway.
Mike, what time do you want for entertainment on Saturday and Sunday? 10:00 or 11:00 AM?
Well, 10:00 Saturday, say 11:00 on Sunday.
Well, can we just keep it consistent?
All right. I'll tell you what, we'll make it 10:00.
Yeah.
Both days.
Look, we can always back it up if we get complaints, and this'll give him the flexibility to start off with a wider...
Is Attorney Conway on the line?
Yeah.
Did you have any, any other comments before we make a motion?
Well, as I said, I wish there was the alcohol...
Don't know what she's saying.
I'm sorry, you've got bad coverage and we can't hear you?
Yeah. I'm part of a, I'm right by a... Daddy.
We do have to open up to Q and A, if you, we can always go back to her if you want.
Is there anyone that wants to speak to this?
Well, we have to go into Q and A, so if you wanna let them know the process...
Sure.
...hitting star six.
Okay. Well, we're gonna open up this topic for Q and A, so I will tell you...
To the public.
Right, to the public. So this is just for the Hibernia Tavern. So that's just hitting pound six, right?
Yep, I'm gonna enter into the session, and they just need to follow the prompts on their phone.
Right.
Yep, our pound six.
Pound six, if you'd like to comment on this topic.
Q and A session has started.
Just say your name if you...
Well, they're not on yet. Right now, I don't have anybody on.
In the meantime, Tony, if the attorney can hear you, could she go drive around to a better spot if she has something to say? I don't, I need to...
Hey, Mike?
Yeah?
Can you do me a favor and call your attorney and see if she's okay with this? Because she's cutting out when we talk to her.
And Arlene has a number right there. Arlene, can you call her right away?
Yeah, no problem.
So there's no one in the queue.
Okay. So we'll give her a minute, and then we will make a motion.
I just have, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Just one minor thing. Mike, if you can hear me, when I was reading over your application, I was looking at, you know, I don't wanna give out too much information. I don't know if it's your home address or not, but you left out part of your street. And the only reason I say that is because if, you know, you're waiting for a license from the ABCC, and they mail it to Edith Road, you may not get it. You dropped homes. I think if you're living at Edith Homes, you just might, somewhere in the application, you just might wanna look. I don't know where it was, but I hate to have you ready to go and then just not get it or something. That's all.
Yeah, I'll make sure your attorney looks into that.
That's all, that's...
Yeah, and the only thing that I'm gonna add, Mike, you have a lot of experience, but we take the liquor license and carding everybody very seriously and serving minors, so please make sure you adhere to all that stuff, and just know that if you come before us, that it's gonna be, you know, we take it seriously, and it'll be very strict consequences, so. Anything to add on that, Maura, or...
No, and I assume, Mike, with his experience, he's gonna have all TIP-certified folks on staff. Do we wanna...
Mike, did you hear that? You have TIP-certified staff?
Everybody has to be.
Great.
Yeah. Do we wanna summarize the hours that we're thinking of for Mike?
Yeah.
So we're thinking entertainment Friday and Saturday from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM, right? Correct, or?
Entertainment first?
10:00 AM to 12:00 AM, correct?
I meant 12:00 AM, yes, sorry, sorry.
That's Sunday through Saturday, the entire week, correct?
No, that's Friday, Saturday, Sun, Friday, because Sunday, I think you said, Sunday through Thursday, they're gonna stop entertainment at 10:00. The workdays, is that right, Maura?
Yes.
So I'm sorry, Sunday through Thursday, what hours?
12:00 to 10:00.
12:00 to...
Well...
10:00 PM.
Except Sunday will start at 10:00 AM.
Yeah, I think Sunday has to be 10:00 AM...
10:00 PM.
...to 10:00 PM. And then Monday through Thursday...
12:00 to 10:00?
Yeah. 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
And then Friday and Saturday will be 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM.
Yep. Mike, did you hear that? It's kinda backwards.
Yes, I did.
Okay. Is that okay with you?
Yes.
Um, Arlene speaking again. I was just talking to your lawyers. I'm not sure if I missed, 'cause I just put everybody on hold. The Carlin wants to know if we could get the, she was on clear, if the liquor hours on Saturday and Sunday were from 10:00 AM for brunch.
Yeah, we haven't gotten there yet.
That's what her question was.
Yeah, we'll get there in one second. So I think the...
Okay, sorry, I wasn't sure if I missed something.
That was just the entertainment. No problem at all.
Okay, thank you.
So what's Friday and Saturday, I'm sorry?
10:00 AM till 12:00 AM.
So I have Monday through Thursday, 12:00 noon to 10:00 PM, Friday and Saturday, 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM, and Sunday, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Yes.
For entertainment.
Yes.
Correct.
Indoor entertainment.
Yes, with the windows closed. And then liquor license, I think we had 10:01 every day, right?
Mr. Chair, it's 10:01 to 12:00, Monday through Thursday, weekends one.
Okay.
Karen Canfield.
Right, so we'll do...
10:00 AM to 1:00 AM.
On Friday and Saturday.
Okay, so Sunday through Thursday, it will be from 10:00 AM till 12:00 AM. Is that right?
No.
I agree with that. Kind of aligns with the...
Right.
The, not late-night Sundays, right? With everybody else. Although, galley's open till 1:00 AM, Tony.
On Sunday?
Yeah. So is TK's.
On Su, okay.
Yep.
So Monday through Thursday, 10:01 to 12:01, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, 10:01 to 1:01. I'm just going by what Maura said.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm proposing, up for discussion, obviously.
So the only difference would be the 8:01?
Mr. Chair, they're proposing 8:01 Friday, Saturday.
Right, and we change that to 10:01.
Oh, okay, sorry, okay, thanks.
Oh, we're talking about it. Okay, so let's wrap this up. So Arlene and Mike, so we're gonna do Friday through, or we're gonna propose Friday through Sunday from 10:00 AM to 1:00 AM, and Monday through Thursday, 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM for your liquor license.
Okay. Yeah.
And if it's a big problem, then we can talk about it later. Okay. So can I have a motion with the times and days of the week that we just mentioned? And I'll tell you what, I'll read it again.
Yeah, just do the liquor one.
So liquor is Monday through Thursday, 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, 10:00 AM to 1:00 AM. And then entertainment?
Karen Canfield.
Great. Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion, seeing none, can we do a roll call?
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
And that is, I'm just gonna recap, Monday through Thursday, 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM, Friday through Sunday, 10:00 AM to 1:00 AM for liquor.
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you, oh...
Attorney, before we move on, we have to end the Q and A as well.
We also have to move entertainment.
We have to do common vic and entertainment.
Oh, that was just liquor, okay. Is there anyone in the queue?
There is no one in the queue if you wanna make the final announcement, otherwise we'll end the Q and A.
Okay, so we're gonna end the Q and A now for this topic. And then can I have a motion for the entertainment?
Q and A session is over.
I move the following entertainment hour license for the Hibernian Tavern to be set from Sunday, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and Friday and Saturday from 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion, hearing none, we'll do a roll call.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
That's unanimous.
And then the common vic.
And the common vicular license, can I have a motion? Ms. Curran?
Do we wanna do it just as written? We haven't really changed their hours of operation, right?
Right.
Move to approve a new all-alcohol restaurant liquor license to Hibernian Tavern Incorporated, located at 111 Front Street, with hours of operation from Monday through Thursday from 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM, Friday, Saturday from 8:00 AM to 1:00 AM, and Sunday from 10:00 AM to 1:00 AM, contingent upon Board of Health and ABCC approval.
I think we already did that one, we're just looking for the common vic.
Oh, that's what I, oh, I was in the common vic one, sorry. I apologize.
No problem.
Okay. They're all written that way. Okay. Sean, if you see it, mine's written the same way.
What I see is the liquor license one, I'm sorry.
It's the next executive.
Yeah. Can I have a motion to give Hibernian Tavern a common vicure license?
Move that, move that the Board of Selectmen approve a common vic license for Hibernian Tavern.
Second by...
Does that work?
Yep.
Second.
By Mr. Harris. Further discussions, hearing none.
Roll call, vote. Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conlin? Did she say this?
Not yet.
Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Right. And just to note that this is all contingent upon the Board of Health and the ABCC approval.
For the, yeah.
All right.
Great. All right, sorry for the choppiness of this. Michael and Arlene, best of luck, and we hope to see you open as soon as possible.
Welcome to Situate.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
We look forward to it.
Have a great day, stay safe.
Bye.
Thank you. Bye.
Okay, so now we're gonna move to the topic of the wind turbine and the testing that we've done. We did get some emails about this, and before we get started on it, I wanna let everybody know, all the neighbors and the people concerned in that area, that we are not going to make a decision tonight, we are not gonna make a vote in terms of how we act, you know, whether we shut it down, limit hours, whatever we do, none of that is gonna happen tonight. The reason we kept this on the agenda for this evening is because we want to hear the report from Al, make the document public so that all the residents and all the town of Situate can get the report and analyze it, and then when we get through kind of this, you know, lack of open meeting, not open meeting, public meeting session, we'll have another meeting that dedicated to this topic. But we didn't wanna postpone this and postpone the work and postpone the information getting out. It's, you know, I like the report, I know we've all looked at it, but probably not as much as we want to, and this'll give us time to get really up to speed on it, as well as the residents. So, that being said, hopefully you're watching on home, and just know that there's not gonna be any action taken this evening on this, it's all informational. That being said, if you do wanna call in, I'll give you the number again, it's 425-436-6308, and then you have to dial 817-651-POUND. That being said, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Al Bangard, who's calling in, and ask him to present the findings of the testing that they've done. Al, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. The floor is yours.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, well, good evening. I'm pleased to be able to broadcast from the Skyline Ballroom located at 106 Captain Pierce Road in Situate. And so tonight, I'm here to provide the board with a summary of the final report on the wind turbine sound level compliance testing that was completed over the past year. You have a copy of the full 88-page report in your packet, that becomes a public record as soon as the meeting is commenced, but let me give you some background first, for the benefit of the vast viewing audience. And on May, in May of 2018, the board awarded a $50,000 contract to the Epsilon Associates, an engineering firm specializing in noise analysis to conduct wind turbine noise testing concerning noise compliance with the DEP standards. Epsilon worked with the Mass Department of Environmental Protection over the course of five months to establish what was, would be an agreed-upon sound level compliance testing procedure, which would involve four Situate locations, two specific wind conditions, over the course of four evenings. And the final agreement on the protocol was reached with the DEP in late November 2018. Epsilon immediately began monitoring for the specified wind conditions, projecting that, when they would occur during the hours of 1:00 AM to 4:00 PM, which, when the testing would occur, because it's the quietest time of the evening. The sound level testing consists of measuring the LMAX, which is the maximum sound detected when the turbine is running, and comparing that to the L90, or the lowest sound level with the turbine shut down. And the sound is quantified using a logarithmic term, decibel scale, called the DBA. It's actually decibels in the range of A, which A range is the range of audibility by humans. So Epsilon completed all the evening noise tests between 1:00 and 4:00 AM, generating 16 sets of data, incorporating several hundred direct measurements of ambient and turbine noise levels. Situate Wind LLC, the owner, and the property owners at all four sites cooperate fully with Epsilon throughout the overnight testing periods. I provided you, the board, with a table summarizing the test results that are more fully detailed in Epsilon's report. The table summarizes the differences in decibels between the maximum sound levels with the turbine running versus the lowest ambient noise levels. Compliance requires that this difference be less than 10 decibels. The results of the testing program show that the sound levels due to the wind turbine operating during wind conditions, producing maximum power, and during wind conditions identified by the resident noise complaints, comply with the DEP noise policy, with the exception of one of the 16 tests. During the two evenings, when the winds were above 20 miles an hour, which is the maximum power, and the turbine was running at full power, the sound differential between the turbine off and the turbine running averaged three decibels, with no reading over seven decibels, and this is below the compliance requirement of 10 decibels. With, during the two evenings, when the winds were less strong and the turbine was running at about one-half power, the sound differential between the turbine off and the turbine running averaged eight decibels, with one reading at 13 decibels, and that's the one that I'm referring to that's not compliant. So, we asked Epsilon to further study, or in order to further understand the apparent non-compliance during the one test at 151 Driftway on July 31st, Epsilon analyzed the L90 soil sound level difference between the turbine on and the turbine off. So remember, L90 was the lowest sound. So what they did was, they analyzed what was the sound in the background with the turbine running, and compared that to the background noise with the turbine off. When the turbine was running, the L90 measures the background between the pushes of the turbine blade. When the turbine, when the turbine is off, the L90 measures the background or ambient sound. On three of the evenings, the differences between the turbine on and off were one to three decibels. However, on July 31st, this background noise jumped to 11 decibels, suggesting that some other sound source influenced the background noise recorded this evening. Note that the property is adjacent to the sewage treatment plant in the commercials, which is in the commercial zone, and this could have been the source of the noise during the evening tests, but we can't confirm this at this point. That really concludes my presentation.
So, Al, just a quick question on that. So are you saying that the one day that it exceeded the level, that's the only day that you did the testing on the background noise, and that was the difference jumped from 1 to 3 to a delta of 9?
Yes, that's correct. Actually, they took, they did that analysis on all of them.
Okay.
To determine what was the L90, what was the noise between the pushes, the background noise, and compare that to the same background noise with the turbine off on all of the tests. And typically, you know, it was a 1 to 3 decimal difference, it's not kind of negligible. But on that one day, it jumped to 11 decibels.
Right. Sean?
Al, don't you mean 13? Unless I'm misreading the chart, on 7/31 of 19, it looked like at 151 Driftway, you had a reading of 13 DBAs. And so I-
Yes.
It's over 10, so therefore it's not in compliance. Is that correct? Am I reading that right?
You are reading that correctly. It is not, that is the one, on July 31st, at 151 Driftway, the reading between the turbine shut down completely and the turbine running, which is, with those winds, was 13 DBs, or decibels, and that is above the 10, that is the requirement. So therefore, it wasn't, the noise testing showed it wasn't in compliance on that particular test.
Okay.
So to try to understand that better, they did an additional analysis to see why was, why was there such a difference? And, because there's a striking difference versus, if you look at that same chart, there's a striking difference for the turbine. On that same day, in those same hours, there was lower differences between on and off. So, they surmise that there's something else going on in that test, you know. That's basically what I'm saying.
Which leads me to my next question, Al. So when they do this testing, is it all mechanical, or is there a person that's actually, you know, by the switch or by this equipment that might be able to hear it? A human? So a person could say that's when a, that's when a loud truck went by at that time, and up the driftway, and that's what caused it? Or you, or are they just reading graphs?
Yes, there is a, they're all, all of these tests are-
Maned?
With personnel on hand. And they take extensive notes throughout the testing. And some of the, so they might run one test and say, oh, we have to throw that piece of data away because an airplane went overhead, or a truck went by, or there was some birds chirping, or whatever. So they tried to, there were, so these were all attended tests with sound professionals and with calibrated meters. And so, they too are a little flummoxed as to why this one data point was so high. They don't, they recall that in all of these tests, that the turbine when running was audible, but audible doesn't mean it's out of compliance. It just, on this one day, the data showed that it was out of compliance.
Thank you.
So, Al, do me a favor, explain the 9 again. So, they're measuring it, and then you said from, from it not running to it running, the delta was 13. What did they actually measure?
Okay, so, right, so, the way, the DEP policy is, you compare the maximum noise you hear with it running with the minimum noise you hear with it not running. So what L90 does, it says you take, it's, it's any, it takes 90% of the sounds that are above that, and throws them out, and only counts the sounds below that. So it's like measuring the maximum of it running with the absolute minimum of when it's not running. So, that, as you see, and that those are the results that are in the chart, and that represents the methodology and the protocol that the DEP sees when they look at results. They look at the maximum of operation versus the total minimum of non-operation. So what Epsilon did was to look at, you know, the turbine, when it runs, what people are disturbed by is the push, push, push. It's an intermittent noise. So what they could do is, they could, they could filter out the noise of the blades, and say what was going on in addition to the noise of the blades pushing. And that is where they said, there was some other noise in the background that was happening while the turbine was running. That also was happening while the turbine, well, wasn't happening when the turbine wasn't running. So, it could be generating noise from the turbine, it could be generating noise from the sewer treatment plant. They didn't pick it up on personal observation, they just picked it up on data.
Okay.
So what it does is says, that one piece of data definitely would, by DEP standards, indicates non-compliance for that one day of these 16 studies. And, at that one property. But, it could be contested with further analysis.
I'm gonna go to Karen Canfield, do you have any questions for Al?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, thank you, Al, for the summary and for your expertise. Will the board be provided with the entire report at some point? It's not in our backup data?
It should be.
Lorraine sent it separately.
I think we have it separately.
Unless I'm missing something, Lorraine, maybe you can help me. I just see Al's summary.
It was an email under summer cover because the bottom was too large for the package.
And for all of you listening-
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
It would have come via hi-tail because it's such a large file.
No.
No, it didn't come.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not see that. Thank you. I will, I will review that. I'm happy to have the opportunity. Al, so could you tell us, what is the margin of error for the sound meters that were used to collect the data? Do you have that information?
Uh, no, I do not, but I could get that for you.
Okay, I would like to know that for, when we convene. You know, I just, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of information that we need to process, and I apologize that I didn't see, didn't see the whole file that had all of the data. And I will look at that before we all reconvene on this topic. But, you know, we know that we have residents who are profoundly affected by this. And unfortunately, that may not match up with what the state guidelines are, and I don't think that diminishes the problem. But I really appreciate this, I think it's, there's a lot of information. I, I need to go and read the whole report. And I, I assume that there's a professional engineer stamp on, on the report that I have not seen yet?
Yes, they, well, I don't know if there's a stamp or not, I'm not sure there's that sort of thing, but they stand by it. They are, they are licensed engineers.
Okay, yeah, no, I know that. All right, well, thank you. I look forward to reading the whole report and convening with the public on this topic, because I think it's very important.
Okay.
Karen Conlin?
Um, yes, I too did not see the whole report, I apologize, I guess I'm unaware. I'm gonna ask a much simpler question. Were the homeowners present for any or all of these tests?
Yes, they, I don't know whether they came out of their homes, they were all coordinated by one of the residents who was on the team, Dave, Mr. Darty, so that they, for every evening that the tests occurred, the residents were made aware and, and had given permission in advance for the testing to occur. So yes, they were all participants to the extent that they knew the test was going on that evening.
Okay, so I guess, another simple question. If there was anyone present, a homeowner or a resident, present at any of these times, if it bothers them, wouldn't they have said, this is it, this is the noise that's ringing me? Or this, so? Do you see where I'm?
Yeah, I would presume that'd be the case. I haven't talked with them about specific tests.
So, so my question is, did the, does the big report have any evidence or observations from the people who were, are affected by this? Because I would look at, they, it wasn't simply, you know, monitoring, that there was also, people would be able to say, this is the place that's really bothering me?
Yeah, I don't see that, that's not listed in the report anywhere. We'd have to ask the residents about that.
All right, well, I will read the full report myself, and I apologize if I didn't.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you, Al.
Ms. Curran?
You're welcome.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. Al, I have a question. The wind conditions all here seem to be greater than 20 miles an hour, 11 to 22, greater than 20, 11 to 22. And, when the residents were in recently, they expressed that it was actually worse when it was lower, like between 7 and 10. So that's my concern, you know, where do we get the parameters of the wind speed to measure? Because it doesn't seem to align with the wind speed that the residents are complaining about.
Well, you have to go back several years when we did tracking of complaints, comparing, those complaints were compared with wind conditions, direction and speeds. And then, there was a, an analysis done to confirm, okay, these are the speeds that seem to be the issue, and on that basis, the test was designed with, with, with that current input for the residents. So, at the time that this test was designed, back in 2018, that was the agreed-upon range of wind conditions that were an issue when, basically when it was lower winds at the turbine and lower winds at the ground, so that the ambient noise was less. That seemed to be more of a resident concern than when high winds were occurring, and therefore, a lot of background noise was occurring that, which dampened the noise of the turbine, I guess. So, these were the conditions that we all agreed to back in 2018. Mr. Darty helped us with this in terms of defining, designing the test, working back and forth with the DEP on what conditions we should monitor. To be specifically, to be clear, the, the DEP's requirements are basically when it's running at full power, when it's making the most, when it's making the most noise it can. We did some additional testing to try to get these lower levels, because that seemed to be more related to when the residents were having issues.
Then we, can I jump in, Tony?
Yeah.
We also looked at the time of the year, when residents had windows closed versus, you know, obviously warm temperatures when windows were open, right? And then, in your wind, Al, you probably learned a lot about wind, but the winds change certain times of the year. More northeast in the winter, and south-southwest in the summer, right? And I thought it was, as I recall, it was mostly out of the south or southwest, I thought, but-
Right, it is.
All right. Morris, do you have any other questions?
No, that was really it right now. Thank you.
So, Al, the, the other thing that stood out to me is on the, on the 6th of December, all of the testing was, was, you know, very close to the limit, you know, all of them came in at the 9 decibels. If it was 10, then they all would have been out of compliance. So, was there any kind of response for that? That's the only one where they're all similar, too.
Yeah, yep. I, this, you know, you, when you look at each one of the tests that's on that date, that's, that's kind of how everything felt.
Right.
In terms of background noise and, and everything else, so it definitely was a windy, you know, it's the conditions, probably the conditions that are, that are most concerning the residents. And, that's, you know. This noise testing is kind of a complicated thing. It relates to, you know, when you add two noises together, you don't double, it's a logarithmic scale. I mean, 50 DBs is about the noise of a dishwasher running in the room next door, or quiet speech at 3 feet. It's, you know, but when you add, but the problem is the wishing sound creates a disturbance in the air, and that is an annoyance to some people, and some more than others. So anyway, this is trying to be scientific about something which is quite subjective, I think.
Just a, a quick summary for those of you that don't have it. So the testing was done on April 19th, July 31st, October 2nd, and December 6th. They were done at four residents. The McKeever's residence, the Carlsberg residence, the Darty's residence, and the Vitale residence. All of these people, you know, have been, have been very vocal about the complaints that they're having, so I'm sure they participated to some level. And again, it was the wind from the west-southwest at the miles per hour that we talked about, so. Okay, well, Al, I don't, you know, what I'm gonna do now is, is, how many people do we have in queue, Michelle?
Well, no one's in the queue yet, but I do show- Well, no one's in the queue yet, but I do show four or five people that are listening now. I have to go into the Q and A.
Okay. So, why don't we open it up to the Q and A part now and, and hear what some of the residents have to say.
Q and A session has started.
Is it one at a time, I assume?
Yep, they have to hit the star six.
Right. So, so hit star six, and then you will be on the line and you can talk to us. Please give us your name first and your address.
All right. I've got two in the queue.
Great. Can we have-
I've got three in the queue. Okay? You ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, caller, you're on the line if you can state your name and address.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, just your name and address, please.
This is Dave Darty.
Hi, Dave, it's Tony and Sean.
One twenty-two.
Great.
One twenty-two Gilson Road. First of all, I wanna, first of all, I'm not feeling very well. I'm going through chemotherapy sickness right now from my cancer treatment, but I feel I have to say a few things, so I hope I can make some sense. I'm glad to see that Epsilon took such great efforts to find why there was a problem with one of the tests and find, trying to find a reason why that the one night that it showed nonconformity was in fact an error. No more than I was there for one session and I went south. And during the ambient background determination, I heard T running in the background, but they didn't eliminate that. So, in the same way, they're looking for some reason to find a problem with why it was nonconforming, there are other nights that I heard noises when the L ninety of the low ambient background was taken that shouldn't have been there, they should've thrown it out. And I said something, but I was ignored. Now, the reason they were so loud down there at the McKeever's, it was loud as hell, I was down there. You're only six hundred and sixty-seven feet from the damn thing. Uh, you know, and the whoosh, 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 as they tried to say, what was the only noise, that's not true. You have the turbine noise also in there, that hum, that hum, that large hum, it's a broadband noise. So, it's a combination of both the steady sound of the, of the, of the turbine plus the incremental or the impact sound of the, of the whoosh, which is like a jackhammer going. So, I'm really, I'm really upset with so much effort being taken on that part. Now, and the reason that night was so prominent was because we had wind shear conditions, which is when it's quiet on the ground, and I think, I think, if I remarkably, if I remember, it said there that the ground speed wind at the recording device was one meter per second, which is about two point two miles per hour, and it was twelve or fifteen meters per second up at the hub, putting out, I think, with sixty percent power. And that's when it really affects us, when it's quiet on the ground and it's noisy, and still putting out high production, which is what DEP wanted, but it's quiet at the ground. The other nights, we didn't have such significant wind shear. The other problem that I see in this is that this whole business of what is the maximum noise? And there's a lot of controversy and interpretation about L max and L EQ, what they call it, L EQ, where they don't really, they're not really giving you the maximum values. If you look through the notes or through the data, you'll see that there are some times and there's some information in there showing amounts of significantly higher amounts and lower amounts, and they average the loudest amount, and they come up with this L EQ. And what that does is, it removes the loudest noises. For example, if you take ten, eight, and five, and you average them, you'll come up with some value between ten and five rather than the ten, which is the loudest. And the DEP specifies in their noise regulation that if the loudest noise subtracted from, pardon me, added on to the lowest noise, not the average of a, of a bunch of readings. What's loud is loud. So, what you're trying to say is that, oh, you can ignore that ten percent of the time because ten percent of the time is above the average. Noise is noise. It disturbs people. There's a lot of, lot of problems in this whole, as Al says, it's not a science or something. There's a lot of controversy involved in the interpretation of DEP and how the, how the people evaluate this. I had hoped to be there, and I hoped that we'd have a public forum because I wanted to have Rob O'Neil there and ask him if Peter Ampateer, who's one of his partners, is aware of this document I have that shows that he agreed that there's a big difference between six and eleven decibels between L EQ and L max. And there was a reason why another facility in the Midwest would not grant it a permit by the, by the town because they didn't, they didn't conform. So, these tests, at best, are untenable to try and evaluate what's going on. The fact remains that, that people are suffering, they kept awake at night, they're woken up. I came back from chemotherapy and radiation two weeks ago to spend one weekend in my home in peace and quiet away from Dana Faba, and the damn thing woke me up. Woke me up. Anyway.
Okay, David, thank you for calling in. We're sorry.
Wait a minute. I would like the, I would like the town to ask for a peer review, and I have a couple of registered acousticians with the same credentials as Rob O'Neil and Epsilon, who will be happy to prepare a peer review of this whole thing. Additionally, the SCADA data that I was promised was not there, only, only an evaluation of what they wanted to give us, not the entire SCADA data from the beginning of the test to the end of the test, as well as all of the data at the hub telling me what the wind conditions were and the power output. I haven't seen that data. This is, this, this test is inconclusive and inaccurate, and it's incomplete.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Al, do we have that hard data for, for the residents?
I'm sorry, do we have what?
Do we have that data for, is that part of the report?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't have it. It's, it's available from Epsilon. We can ask them to send that to us.
That'd be great.
I don't know what I would do with it.
Well, we can certainly make-
We're relying-
Peer review.
Yeah. So, we'll-
We might tend to have that.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, whatever.
Yep, so we'll, we'll get it available.
But I'm gonna have other professionals in the field evaluate this.
All right. Mr. Darty, thank you. We'll try and get that information available, make it available to the public.
Okay, we're gonna go to the next question?
Yes.
All right. Nathan?
We're going to the next question.
Sorry, that dropped some.
Nice.
Hi, next caller?
Yep, next caller, just your name, please, and address.
Hi, this is Ellen Casper from one twenty Gilson Road. Thank you, Dave, for being there for all of us even when you're sick. He can speak to this much better than I can. I'm happy that you're not making any decisions tonight. As you know, I complained for many, many, many years about this whole situation, but I do have one email to read you from April nineteenth. And I wrote to my neighbors and said, "Do any of you know if testing was done last night? I find it interesting, but not surprising, that they would choose a night with very strong winds. Definitely not, capital N-O-T, the conditions that cause problems for us, Ellen." So, that's just one instance when testing was done, when it clearly was not a time that the conditions were the same that bother us. And I find that, I mean, this whole situation, it's been like this for us. People just don't believe that we're having problems, and they're not, even the twenty mile per hour testing, I mean, you have years and years and years of complaints from us. I mean, I'm constantly sending you the wind speed when it's bothering me, and it's never more than ten, southwest at ten. So, to see twenty miles per hour, it just doesn't make any sense to me. And that's all.
So, Ellen, one, one quick thing. Al, did you say that they needed to do the testing at full capacity? Was that one of the-
Yes, the DEP, the DEP required that we run, in addition to the tests we do, that we did, that we set up based upon the complaint conditions, the DEP requires that we did testing at full energy or at, which is about twenty miles an hour. So, that's why those tests were done, because that's what the DEP says, where, where compliance must matter, you know? So, they require the twenty mile an hour winds. We did the additional ones, the, the lower wind levels based upon the complaint period.
Thanks, Al. So, Ellen, just one quick-
Not what bothered us.
Yep, and we-
Not when it bothered us.
Right. We hear you. We had to do the, the testing for, to meet certain standards. There's no one on the board anyways that doesn't believe that there are people affected by this. So, and that's why we are trying to get to the bottom of it as best as we can. But, but please feel assured that, that we know that it does impact some people, clearly. And it doesn't impact other people. It doesn't, maybe not impact your neighbor, but that doesn't mean that it, it doesn't impact you. So, we will have, again, an open meeting where everybody can participate, and it'll be after everyone can evaluate the report in full. So-
Thank you.
Thanks for calling in, Ellen. The next one?
Next caller?
Can you just give us your name and address? Can you hear us?
Hello, can you hear us? It says they're there.
Maybe your phone's on mute?
I'm here, sorry.
Hi, Nathan.
I was on mute. Yes, I was on mute.
Oh, great. Name and address, please.
Evening, it's Joanne Mavas. I'm at, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good, thank you. I'm a Duxbury resident, and I've been an advocate for the Situate since I was first contacted by them back in 2012. And I've attended pretty much every Board of Health meeting on the subject, and I've been, I'm hoping you can allow me to ask a couple of questions for Mr. Banger.
Sure. Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, Al. I know there was a document, I don't know if the Board of Suckman has read it, the protocol for the Situate wind acoustic monitoring was submitted to the Mass DEP, and they provided comments. And I just want to read the first comment and see, it, it seems to conflict with what you had said earlier this evening in your presentation. And their document says, "Mass DEP Southeast Regional Office has reviewed the proposed protocol dated August twenty-eighth, 2018, prepared by Epsilon Associates, and offers the following comments, questions, recommendations." The very first comment is, page one, first paragraph, strike the reference of Mass DEP approving the monitoring protocol. Mass DEP is providing comments on the protocol. And so, my point being, it appears that the Mass DEP has never approved the monitoring protocol, that they have taken the stance as they have in other communities, that since they didn't permit any of these projects, they're just providing commentary.
Okay.
I think that's correct.
Okay, because in your earlier presentation, you, you referred multiple times to the Mass DEP approving the protocol. And I think what Mr. Darty was trying to, trying to dial in on, as he has for the last several years, is the monitoring protocol was, you know, in need of questioning.
The monitoring protocol was reviewed with the DEP over the course of four months. They made comments, their responses were given, and in the end, they accepted that we were going to go forward with it as it was written.
But, but just for clarity, did they ever approve the monitoring protocol, or did they, did they sort of stick with their stance that they were only providing comments?
I'm sure that they were sticking with the stance that they only provide comments. They are reluctant to approve.
Okay. I think, okay, I think that's an important point to sort of consider going forward. The next question would be number six. The Mass DEP asked, "Will any noise-reduced operation modes, curtailment plans, et cetera, be enacted during the sound testing?" And I think the basis for that question is, as was shown in other communities, when developers are allowed to be involved in the testing process, there's always this question of whether they might power down or enact noise, you know, reduced operation modes, in other words, lowering the pitch in the blades or whatever, which is why, I believe Mara Curran very astutely asked the question, "Where, where is the data for all the broad data, all the SCADA data, which would include the electric power output that was occurring during the data collection, and which would also inform all of you what the, the blade pitch were for the turbines, so you would know if it was in fact in reduced noise control mode, in addition to the field notes from the technicians-"
Okay.
"-noting whether, as Dave Darty mentioned, that there might be train noise or other contamination during the testing, and in addition, the audio tapes, which are always taken by any of these consultants when they're in the field doing testing. And all of that information sort of would allow for a really good period of the, of the investigation that Epsilon engaged in."
Right. Okay, so these are all very good questions and very good, specific technical data points, which are way over the head of us. We are actually a municipality, some volunteers, some paid employees, who have hired professional engineers who have their reputation on the line. We solicited several engineering firms, selected one, paid them fifty thousand dollars. They are beholding to us, not to anybody else, and they have provided an analysis for the town of Situate based upon their professional capabilities, which far exceeds ours in terms of ability to understand and deal with all these details. Now, you obviously have great expertise in this area. However, I'm not sure that the town at this point wants to go through a second analysis by hiring additional engineers, since we, I believe, trust the engineers that we did hire. All the data that you're talking about, audio tapes, observations at the point of testing, et cetera, are available. I'm not sure what we would do with that as government employees to do any further analysis. So, sort of hiring a third party to analyze the data of the people that we hired to analyze the data, I'm not sure how we proceed.
Yeah.
My, my only comment-
Joanne, yeah, so, Joanne, Joanne.
...is that a peer review process is critical to the scientific method, and science is only good as its repeatability, and peer reviews are incredibly important, especially when, and the last comment I'll make is, one of the first meetings I, I went to with the Mass DEP on the topic of all these local communities who are experiencing these noise problems with neighbors, was that the Deputy Commissioner, Alicia Barton, of the Mass DEP said, "The Mass DEP fully understands that when there's widespread community complaints, that that is an indication of noncompliance." And that's why I think it's really important to dial in on this report and, and verify the scientific method that was engaged in.
So, Joanne, what is your background? What is your role?
Okay, let's see. I don't know how much detail you want to get into, but I am a Duxbury resident. I was targeted, my neighborhood was targeted to be adjacent to a project. Our neighborhood coalesced and created a group to educate our town officials. I was on the research committee, which meant I digested a great deal of information. This is back in 2012. My Board of Suckman assigned me or appointed me to our Wind Advisory Committee, which was intended to sort of look around to other communities and see what was happening with their project. I had people from Situate and Kingston reach out to me and ask me for advice because they were sort of, uh-
Okay. Joanne, I'm just gonna cut you short here, not, I'm not trying to be rude, I just, so there, you're just a-
No, that's okay.
It's just a concerned resident who's done-
A long topic.
Who's just done research on, on the to- Who's just done research on the topic, but not a scientist or not a, you know, a technician in this field.
You are correct.
Okay, great. And that's not, that's not good or bad. I just wanted to get a sense of where you're talking-
I'm here, I'm here, and I have been here for the neighbors providing background information. That is my wheelhouse.
I know. And I guess my point, my thought is, we all, we all acknowledge that something's going on there and it does impact people. But we also don't believe that the test was rigged. So I'm not, you know, we hired scientists to go out and look at stuff, to see what the results would be, and we had no, no interaction with them in terms of what we wanted it to be. We didn't, in fact, we really didn't, you know, we really didn't have a dog and horse in terms of how it came back. We just wanted it to be, you know, truthful data, accurate data, so. And, but again, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that it doesn't impact people and we may not have to deal with it. So, that being said, I think there's a couple of the callers.
Okay. With all due respect, I'd just like to say, it's really important that if you're only going to do four tests in order to confirm neighbors' distress, the tests need to be done during the conditions which impact neighbors the most. And I think what Ellen Casper was alluding to regarding her observations on the April 19 test event was, those were not the conditions where she experienced distress.
Great. Thank you for calling in.
Okay, you're welcome.
The next caller?
Next caller?
Mark McKeeva, 151 Driftway.
Hi, Mark.
How are you?
Good.
Thank you for, thank you for allowing me to speak real quickly. Just in regard to the certain, you know, standards of when the testing was happening at my house, at the Darty location, and at the other two locations. You know, whether or not it was 13 decibels or nine decibels, we're affected, you know, most all wind conditions, whether it's coming from the southwest or the northwest, or, and it, it's every day, you know? And I understand, I've repeated myself at length to you folks, and, you know, we are hurting and we are, you know, struggling to sleep. Mr. Darty coming home and, and, you know, being sick, getting woken up, it's just, it's unfortunate and we all need to come together and fix this and hopefully we can fix this sooner rather than later.
Right. Well, I appreciate your comments. We got an email from your wife, I believe, and we all read that as well. And we're doing our best to get to the bottom of it, so, know we're taking it seriously.
I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks, Mark. I think there's one more caller.
Yeah, it's David Darty again.
Hey, David.
Al, I'm in Bos- Al, I'm in Boston right now.
David, you have to ask the questions, David.
Mr. Darty? Can you just please state your name for the record and your address?
And the questions have to go through the board.
David Darty, 122 Gilson Road.
Thank you.
And ask, ask the questions through the board, David.
I don't have the RFP. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yeah, ask the questions to me, the board, and we'll go from Al if we need help.
Okay. Al, Al was saying that the protocol that we had agreed upon said we had to have full power. He said DEP wanted full power. I'm not sure about that because I don't have the RFP here. I'm in Boston and I had to rent a place next to the hospital. But I think it was 60% power output is what they were looking for, not full power. And that's what they had close to that night, I think it was 60, 65% the night that we had showing the violation at the McKeeva's house on the second test. The other thing is, the question is, this business about DEP approval or DEP advice on the protocols, somehow that got twisted. Because I tried to change the protocols from not taking LEQ, which was the average of those maxims, as I tried to indicate before, and take LMAX. And I was told by Dan DeSalvio down in the Southeast Region that, well, he can understand why, but he can't approve that. And he got that approval thing in mind again. See, it's not written, but they throw that at you. So I went to Boston and I got the Laurel Carlson and a few of the others in there. And they said, "Oh, no, we can't approve that. We understand why you want to do that." "Oh, yes, there's definitely 6 to 11 decibels difference. You have to get that from Marty Sueberg." Well, Marty Sueberg refuses to answer my registered letters. And he even has refused to answer Senator O'Connor's request for a sit-down with me. So we're being stonewalled with a set of protocols that the DEP won't go up to saying that those are required and they try to say it's advice. And this is all we're trying to say.
Okay. David, thanks for calling in. We understand this is not an exact science. And we understand regardless of what the numbers come back as, that there's still citizens that are impacted. You know, you included, so.
Well, you have to remember, there's a big political thing, you know, to, for green energy. And this is the baby, you know? And we have to do everything we can to promote green energy. And that's what they're doing. But unfortunately, some of us are getting hurt by it.
Yep. Okay, well, thanks for calling in and we hope you feel better.
Yeah, okay, maybe I'll die like I said. Bye-bye. Have a good weekend, have a good-
Please don't do that.
We don't want that, David. All right, so we can end Q and A.
By the way, you were talking about credentials. I'm, you know, I'm a civil engineer, you know, like, so, you know, when you tried to tell Joanne Lavesque is not qualified, she knows more than most of these engineers.
No, no, I didn't try and say she wasn't qualified. I just didn't know, I didn't know her background. I didn't know who she is. She's from Duxbury and I've never met her.
Yeah, she was on the Wind Advisory Committee in Duxbury. She's very, very well-educated. She's an intelligent woman and she donates her time to help people in grief like we have in Situate. And she's very, very, very well attuned to this. She's a very, very, very bright woman and she knows more than most of these engineers that I've met, a lot of my colleagues. Thank you very much. Good night.
Good night. Okay, so Michelle, there's no more-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes? Oh, who is that?
Mr. Chairman, Karen Conley, may I comment?
Oh, yes, please. We're going to just end the Q and A, Karen.
Obviously, we all wish Mr. Darty a healthy return. I just want to let the board know that when we received notice that this was on the agenda, I alerted Senator O'Connor that we would be having this conversation and receiving these reports because obviously we need to marshal as many resources as we can to address this problem. And so while we review this data, Q and A session is over.
That's okay, you're still on.
Am I still on?
Yes, you're still on.
You're not affected.
I thought you cut me off this show. So as we review the data that has been presented by Al and the consultants tonight, that I would let all of the callers know we will be reaching out to the state representative because we could use their support in this problem.
Okay, I guess, I mean, yes. Any other, Karen Conley, any comments?
Al.
Okay, Sean?
No, not about this, but before everyone hangs up, especially Al, I just want to ask, just a regular question, but not anything to do with the content of this. Al? Al, can you hear me?
Yes.
Are you on a landline? You are coming in so much better than everyone else. So for future, when we do this in two weeks, maybe us, it might be at home, if we have a choice on landline or whatever, could you share with us what you have versus Karen Conley, who sounds like she's in Australia?
I'm on a landline too.
You are, all right.
I'm on a land-
All right, you sound better now, but you did sound, I just, I just wonder for, so we can improve this as we go on.
You know, I might, I might post enough to the phone. Is that better?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, great. Okay, so, again, we're going to end the discussion now on the wind turbine. The report is going to be made public. It's going to go on the website. When did we say, tomorrow? By the end of the day tomorrow or the next day? But shortly, the report will be on the website so people can have access to it. And then, Al, if you can just ask the Epsilon for that data and see what we can get for that, then we'll go from there.
Thank you for putting your time into this, Al.
It's a very difficult topic and you've done a great job in terms of, you know, trying to make us understand it because clearly we're not experts in this field.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a safe evening.
You as well.
You too. Okay. So we'll move on to the next topic, which is consultant contract for Storm Tide Pathways. Kyle Boyd, excuse me, the Coastal Resource Manager.
Kyle is, should be on the line.
Kyle, are you there?
Hello? Hi, Boyd, yeah, can you hear me all right?
We can. Do you want to explain the contract?
Yeah, so, I'll give you a little bit of history. I think that's probably the best way to go about this. Because I think, for the most part, you guys are familiar with the actual project. It's the Center for Coastal Studies. They're going throughout the coast of Situate and they are basically taking engineered points to then map real-time data for how storms flow throughout, basically during storm events so that we can provide that to emergency personnel. Background information, I started October 2018. Basically, December, Brad had told me he was interested in applying for this grant. February, we started putting the application together. I submitted the application in April of 2019. We received the grant in June of 2019. At that point, the contract was brought to Jim for signature, and this is the state contract. So we then had a kickoff meeting and we waited, we, we were waiting for the state to get that regional coordinator who controls the MVP program. So then we had our official kickoff meeting within September of 2019. And then we launched into the project. This included a presentation to emergency personnel. Basically, the Center for Coastal Studies gave a full-blown presentation to the emergency personnel from Cohasset and Situate on December 17th. Everyone, you know, was really excited about, the emergency personnel was really excited about the data they're going to be getting. And then, if you recall, in January, I came before the board for the Consensus Building Institute for the coast-wide master plan that we're doing. I needed to have that signed off. And so when I went to ask Nancy about, you know, the procedures, because that was the first time that I personally had taken a contract through the whole system, she had said, "Because this is over a certain dollar value, this needs to go before the Board of Selectmen. A town contract needs to be executed." And at that point in time, well, not at that exact moment, a couple of weeks later, it dawned on me that we did not have a town contract for this grant right now. So I reached out to the Center for Coastal Studies to see if there was anything that they had with Brad and they had said no. So I basically put one together, I sent it over to them, and they then, over the last month, had it circ- maybe actually a little longer, but I had it circulating to our legal team and I finally got it back to me and here we are. So this is definitely backwards, but that's the history.
Okay. So what you're saying is some of the, some of this is FY '19, some of this is FY '20, and we need to have a contract in place to do this, and you've got it?
Yep.
Great.
And so the matching funds for this are Situate, $26,000 in kind. And that's pretty much a combination of my time as well as all the emergency personnel Cohasset, chipping in $8,881, and then UMass Amherst is chipping in $5,000.
Great, and the rest of it is grant?
Yep. $112,668.28 is grant funding.
Great, and it's all basically storm path data, GIS tracking, and help us understand what the storm impact will have on our communities?
Exactly.
Great. Can I have a motion?
May I just ask one question, Mr. Chair? Sorry. When, when is this to be completed since we're probably midway through, right? Kyle?
Kyle, you get that?
I'm having a hard time. I couldn't hear the question.
Completion date, Kyle?
So we are supposed to finish at the end of June, but basically, the way everything's going on now, a big portion of the tail end of this has to do with presenting the data to the emergency personnel from Cohasset and Situate. And so the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs is currently, I talked to them yesterday, they are trying to figure out what they're going to recommend. As of now, we're still supposed to finish this in June. But that might change. We still don't know. And if it, if it doesn't change, we could potentially be looking at some sort of virtual presentation for the end of this. But if it does change, we're going to have to have a contract extension. They usually don't allow contract extensions, pretty much no matter what, but we're hoping that this situation, they would because I think it would be more powerful to have an in-person meeting with the emergency personnel if possible.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Karen Conley, do you have any questions?
I don't, thank you.
Karen Conley?
No, sir.
Great. Sean?
No.
Can I have a motion, Sean?
Will the Board of Selectmen approve the contract with the Center for Coastal Studies in the amount not to exceed $112,668?
Second?
Second.
By Ms. Curran, further discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran? Yes.
Great. Kyle, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Take care.
Take care.
The next item on the agenda is a discussion vote on a request to build osprey nests at Bailey's Causeway. And this is by, actually, the marsh on Bailey's Causeway, by Joseph Simarito?
Yes, he's not here. We didn't invite him in. We've never had one of these on the agenda before, but Jim and I talked about it and he thought you might want to know about it. It was approved at the Conservation Commission meeting.
Okay. Where is he building them?
Down off Bailey's Causeway in the marsh.
Behind the parking lot there?
Behind the parking lot, I believe, yeah.
Have you ever seen him there?
No, I've never seen him there, but I know-
They're like a big platform, basically.
Yeah, or a pole.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I've seen him.
But Lorraine and I talked about it and I said, "We don't need the board driving by and saying, 'What the heck is the guy doing putting a pole up in the marsh?'" It just fell on the agenda and we're doing it that way.
And Karen Conley, any questions?
No, I'm all for osprey.
All right. Karen Conley, are you all for osprey?
Well, I'm all for ospreys. I just, my only question was, did the residents on Buttonwood Lane have an opportunity to opine on this proposal?
I'm sure the Conservation Meeting was-
The community bodies were notified through the Conservation Commission process.
Can I just-
Okay, that was, that's my only concern is, it would be out a whole bunch of people's bedroom, or bathroom, kitchen windows. And, and I love ospreys, but I don't know if they do.
Maura?
Yeah, as long as the abutters were notified, that's fine. Yeah, I'm just curious, you know, is it one of those, if you build it, they will come sort of things? Like, we don't have any osprey nests anywhere, right?
Oh, yes, we don't.
We do? Oh, where? Oh, where?
Like on Hadley Golf Course, I think you'll see them.
The cell, the cell tower, the transfer station.
Oh, okay. I haven't seen them.
The only thing I would ask, are they a bird of prey? Are they going to be like picking off little dogs and cats in the neighborhood?
I don't think so.
All right, well, I just, you know, I mean, to Mara's point, you know, just let maybe the abutters know out there. That's all.
All right, can I have, can I have a motion?
Move to approve the request to build an osprey nest on the marsh adjacent to Bailey's Causeway.
Second.
Second. My Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Hearing none. Can we do a roll call?
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Sure.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Great. That's unanimous. I'm just Googling osprey for you right now.
May I say it is a fish-eating bird of prey.
Okay, Toto's all set then.
Yeah.
All right.
Rabbits, hares, and various rodents on occasion.
All right.
My visual has been repaired.
And oil trucks, apparently.
Yeah.
Okay. Now we have, the next item is a recommendation and discussion. And I have a document here. And it is from Jim Bedrow, the town administrator, and he is recommendation, recommending the appointment of the police chief. And he, actually, I'll let him describe it, but he is recommending to have Deputy Chief Mark Thompson named as the future police chief for the town of Situate effective June 5, 2020. Do you want to go through the process?
So we went through an assessment process for the chief of police, and that includes written exercises, budget exercises, and then a series of give and takes between a panel and the applicants, questions, personnel, things like that. Then they are scored by the applicants. I received the score back, and then I make a recommend, actually, I make an appointment, and then the board has the power to reject that appointment. But Mark made it through the Assessment Center with flying colors. He was rated as a superior candidate for the position of chief of police. He has the experience. Mike Stewart, as I put in my letter, Mike has done a great job building that department, and I think Mark is the person who's going to take that department and keep it going in the right direction and take it to the next level. It's an outstanding department. Mark's an outstanding candidate. And what I'm asking the board to do tonight is waive your power of veto so that this appointment can take effect immediately. But we all know Mark. I sat in on the Assessment Center, and he did a phenomenal job. Really, very, very impressive. There were two other chiefs and a retired chief on the panel, and they were all effusive in their praise of how well he did and what a good job he did with that panel in dealing with the assessments.
Karen Conley, any questions?
No, I just want to say it's a wonderful, wonderful news. I'm very happy. I know he's just, he'll do a great job, and I thank Chief Stewart for bringing him along. We're very lucky.
Karen Canfield?
As much as I hate to see Chief Stewart go, and he has served our town so well for so long, I am beyond thrilled that Mr. Bedrow has recommended Deputy Chief for this position because he's an outstanding person, and I'm so excited that he will be taking the reins.
Maura?
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. It's sad to see chief retire. Wish him well, but he certainly took the department from one level to the next, and Mark really will, I think, do us wonders. I have a lot of confidence in Mark. And for me, as a resident, it's nice to have that sense of comfort that a new leader coming in, we have some good experience with, you know. It's his calm way in which he deals with issues and his rational, I think he's just a very rational human being, and so proud of him, and I certainly support Jim's appointment here.
Shaun?
Only one little thing I can add, because all three of you did such a great job saying what I couldn't agree more, was that, you know, he came from within. This is the second time. I just think that's so important for the young, you know, officers coming on, that, you know, they can someday maybe run the department. And that's huge in my book. Jim, I'm just going to ask you to repeat what you said to me last week. Karen Conley just touched on it, you know, in thanking Chief Stewart. You said to me last week, one of the most important roles a chief can, how'd you phrase it?
So if you want to have the ability to appoint from within, then the current chief has to mentor those people, get those people ready, and have someone in the line of succession that is prepared to take over. And Mike Stewart's done a fantastic job of doing that. If the chief doesn't do that, then a lot of times you've got to go outside of the department because no one has been prepared to take over.
Thank you for saying that so well. Mike, if you're listening, awesome job.
And the only thing I could add is, I was on the committee that appointed Mike. We had, Shaun, you were as well. We had a ton of candidates from all across the country, and Mike was clearly the right person. We already spoke about him and his retirement, and that was part of what he's done since day one. You know, he has trained people and he's put them in positions to learn and to take the next step in their career. And Mark Thompson is awesome. You know, he's involved in the community. He knows the town like the back of his hand, and he's just a very serious diligent police officer, and I couldn't be happier with his appointment. So good job, Jim. And do we just need to make a motion that we're going to reject?
We have the board move to waive its power of rejection and approve the appointment of Deputy Chief Mark Thompson as the next chief of police for the town of Situate.
So moved? So moved.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Absolutely.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Great. It is unanimous, 5-0. Congratulations, Mark. And that goes into effect on June 5, correct? June 5. Great.
So just two things. When this whole COVID-19 thing expires and we can actually have people in the room, we will have a ceremony for Mark, a pending ceremony. I told Mike Stewart, we have, we ripped it off him and then we put it on Mark. But we'll have a ceremony for him where we'll, you know, formally appoint him and let him take his role. In the meantime, the assessment was for the chief, and then we did the assessment for the deputy chief. We had two lieutenants and a sergeant who took that assessment. So now Mark and I will sit down and go through that assessment and choose who will be the next deputy. And then whoever that person is, will create a vacancy that we'll have to fill all the way down.
Good.
Great.
So the hope is we'll have all these done by the time Mike retires. At this point, I'm not confident of that because it does involve assessment centers where people have to be in the same room. So I'm not confident we'll get it all done, but we will definitely have the chief and the deputy in position when Mike retires.
Great. Good job. Moving on to the next topic is assigning the articles for annual town meeting. So again, that's kind of up in the air. We don't know when that's going to happen, how that's going to happen, but we do have 28, or four special town meeting articles and 28 annual town meeting articles. Why don't we run through them real quick and assign them, and then we can, if anyone wants to change them over the course of the next couple of weeks, we can do that as well. But at least give people time to start preparing. Typically, the chair does the special town meetings, so I'll do those four. And then I think?
I have seven on my list.
Seven special?
Yeah.
Seven that you want to do?
Community pay down and debt, community preservation FY19 and 20, aside Cedar Point Sewer Project.
It's an old list.
That's an old list. So there's unpaid bills.
That's an old list?
Yes. That's what Nancy's saying.
Sorry.
I have the new list.
Okay. All right.
Unpaid bills, budget reconciliation, CPC, and Cedar Point are the four for the special. And then I think the.
Um.
Go ahead.
No, that's all right. Never mind.
You sure?
Well, my list says, number one, this is special town meeting, unpaid bills, FY20 budget reconciliations, snow and ice emergency storm costs, rescind debt authorizations, pay down ANU debt, community preservation FY19 and 20 set-aside adjustments, and Cedar Point Sewer Project.
Date on our list.
What's the date on that list?
Um, 1/7/2020.
This is March, this is March 6.
You've got a new one. I need to pack it for this night, Karen.
So those three middle ones have been taken care of.
Do you want to email it to your regular?
Okay.
How many do you have?
No, that's all right.
How many do you have on the other one? 28?
I'll do it.
29.
Okay. Well, you'll have to.
I just picked up an old, I just picked up something old. It's my fault.
No problem.
All right.
So I think the chair typically does the first two, maybe. The budget, which one's the, so maybe the first four? Somebody help me with the first four?
First four, yeah.
Okay. So I'll do the first four. And then we have the enterprise funds, of which a few are consent. Does anyone have interest in doing waterways?
Wastewater?
Wastewater.
First one's waterways, I think.
Waterways is consent, right?
You still need to assign them.
If it is, yeah.
All right. I'll do it, Tony.
Do you want to do a couple of them, Shaun? Do you want to do golf?
Yep.
And wastewater?
Sure.
All right. So Shaun will do those first three enterprise funds. You want to do the next one?
Yep.
You want to do all of them?
He's doing all of them.
Yeah, I mean, and if they're not consent, that only leaves me with just one.
Yeah, consent leaves you with one, yeah.
That's your perfect town meeting.
There you go.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Who's doing capital?
I will, unless somebody else wants to. I know Capital Planning will get up and talk about it.
I'm fine doing it. I don't care.
What's that?
I'll give you a break if you want it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, why don't we just decide?
So Maura's going to do capital, and then Shaun's going to do the enterprise fund, so we're on number 10. Karen Conley, you're the CPC liaison, right?
Yep.
Do you want to do 10, 11, 12, 13?
Sure.
And Karen Canfield, do you want to do 14, 15, and 16?
Yes, sir.
And what about you, Maura? Do you want to do?
Sure. You want to give me other ones? You can be whatever.
Sure. Why don't you do 17, 18, 19? Do you want to do the zoning? Who's the zoning liaison?
Mr. Chair, can we go back to 19?
Yep.
Um, so Maura's going to do 17, 18.
Do you want to do?
We don't know where 19, we don't know if 19's going to be discussed.
Correct. Could be postponed at this point.
Right. Maura, do you want to do 17, 18, 19?
Sure.
Okay. Who's the zoning liaison?
I'm the planning board. Karen Canfield's the planning board. So I was thinking 20 through 24 I should do.
Okay. That's all zoning. That's good.
I don't know who's zoning this. Who's zoning?
22, 23, and 24 are general bylaws.
You're probably going to say me. I don't know if I'm.
Oh, those are general, oh, yeah, those are general bylaws.
21 is zoning, 22, 23, and 24 are general bylaws, but she can still do them, just not zoning bylaws.
Oh, you're saying 22, 23, 24. Right.
Right. Those are general bylaws.
Do you want to do those, Karen Canfield?
I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
So she's doing 23, 24, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, so maybe we'll take, do you want to do, Maura, do you want to do 14, 15, or 16?
I thought so.
Well.
Sure.
Oh, any of them? Want to do 16?
Sure.
What just happened? I'm sorry.
I don't know.
Maura's going to take 16. 14, 15, and 16 was Karen Canfield.
Right.
Now it's going to be Maura.
Right, and maybe.
Maura's going to take 16 only, I believe.
I'm just wondering, okay. Well, we can even it afterwards. And so then we have 25, 26, 27, 28. So who wants to do the right to farm?
I'll do it.
All right.
How did we vote on it?
You haven't yet.
Yeah. Did we vote on it?
No.
No, not yet.
You haven't voted on zoning or right to farm.
Yep.
Well, I think, I think it depends on what vote is, as to whether or not I would agree to do it. I'll do it, but I don't want to, I disagree with the vote. You know what I mean?
Right. So let's, I thought we voted farming.
No, I think we just did room occupancy and I think we did 26 and 27, didn't we?
And 28.
And 28, yeah.
So 26 is going to be IP'd, right? Because we did it above.
We already have done it, yeah.
Yeah.
So 27, whoever does, whoever does 14 can just be prepared to do 26. 27.
All right, that's me.
27 and 28. Does anyone have any interest in doing the $5,000 donation?
I just cannot. You know that.
Yeah. I can do it.
Okay.
And 28, does anyone want to do the Medicare for all?
I'll do it.
Karen Conley, great. All right. So why don't we go through these and add them up, and then we can, we can make any adjustments we need to next week.
Who says doing 25?
25, Shaun.
Yes.
We'll look at the list, and you can look at it, and then we can.
Yeah, we'll make any tweaks we need to. And when you look at yours, just see which are consents, because usually those pass. If that's all you have, then maybe we'll take some from someone that has more.
That's the case for me, Tony. So.
Yeah. So we'll figure it out. Great. Other business liaison reports? I don't think there's been many meetings.
Karen Conley, the superintendent's search is continuing. We're doing the interviews now by Zoom. We're doing interviews tomorrow night and Thursday night, and then if all goes well, we'll have a deliberation meeting on Saturday.
Great. Anybody else?
No, I haven't had any meetings since the last.
Great. Correspondence?
Before we move on, Mr. Chair, I just want to bring, I don't know if it's a liaison report, but I just want to note that sandhelp.org has a website up and running that if you want to help people in the community during this crisis, or if you need help, that you can go to that website and click the button and fill out a form and help our community.
Great. Karen, can you just say the website again? Sands?
It's called www.sandhelp, S-A-N-D-S-H-A-C-L-P-S dot org.
Okay. Great.
They did a really nice job.
Yeah. Any other correspondence?
Ancini.
Lorraine, I'm scrolling through. I do not see correspondence. Am I correct?
No correspondence for this meeting. Correct.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. So approval of the minutes?
Move to accept the minutes for the Board of Selectmen meeting held on March 10, 11, and 17 of 2020.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor with a roll call?
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
So it is unanimous. Okay, before we adjourn in.
One more sedentary session, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Move to accept and not release the executive session minutes for the Board of Selectmen meeting held on March 10, 2020, since the matter discussed is still pending at this time.
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor by roll call?
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
So first, I want to thank everybody that helped pull this together. It was, you know, we'll learn from them, but I thought it was fine. You know, I think it was good. And given the situation that we're all dealing with right now, this is the best we can do. So bear with us and. this is the best we can do. So, bear with us, and it'll get better every time. Another quick comment, you know, I'm very proud of the town in the way that they're handling this crisis. You know, I noticed people are paying attention to social distancing. I do see people out walking around, but I don't see people congregating. And I just think it's very important that you follow the guidelines that the government is giving us so that we can minimize the impact. As Jim said when we started this, there's already four people in Situate that have been diagnosed positive, you know, with this, with the coronavirus. And it's going to grow. You know, it's just inevitable that it's going to grow. You know, our job right now is to pay attention to the rules and minimize it so that, you know, as everyone's saying, flatten the curve. So, you know, please continue to pay attention to it. Please take it seriously. And on top of that, you know, help your neighbors and help your local businesses. And, you know, buy, take out, and do what you can to, you know, to keep our community thriving. So, I thank you all for that. One other note, and we mentioned this at our meeting the other day, but this is our first selectmen's meeting since getting this news, is, you know, a former selectman passed away last week, Joe Norton, who was a selectman for 30 years. And I know he meant a ton to all of us on the board. Shaun served with him for many, many years, and I served with him for probably just under 10. And John Danahue, I spoke with him. And, you know, we're all, we're all really crushed by this. And it's, you know, what a great person, and really someone that really loved this community and did so much for this community for so long. And it, you know, it's just a huge loss, and it's really hurt, not, it's very hard for us because we're going through this crisis right now. We really can't show our emotions and really celebrate his life the way that I think a lot of us would like to. So, you know, I, all of our well wishes go out to the family. It's a great family, and, you know, we miss Joe. And it's a sad time for all of us. So, but I assure you, when we can get out in public, we will, we will celebrate all the great things that he did for this town. And we're all lucky because we had him. So, I don't know if anyone wants to add on to that. You know.
Well said. Tony, well said. I mean, it's a difficult time not to be able to go and meet with the family and celebrate everything that Joe did for the town. And, but I do also echo your comments with commending our Situate residents too during this crisis. So, I'm not going to repeat it. It's late, but I agree with everything you said. So, thank you.
Karen Conley, any, not that you have to-
Of course. No, I will, I will say that, you know, it is sad that we can't do something immediately, but I know when, when there's time, we will have a wonderful celebration for him and for his family to thank him and thank them for all they've done for the town. You know, it's hard when you contribute to a town the way Joe did, that sometimes you don't spend as much time at home. But we all benefited by it, and I thank them all.
Karen Canfield?
I look forward to the day when we can celebrate everything that Joe Norton did for our community.
Shaun, anything?
So, so well put by all of you guys. You know, I really can't add anything anymore other than he was, he was a great friend of mine. And hopefully, you know, down the road, I would like a chance to, you know, put my thoughts together and tell the folks in town, you know, what he's done for me as a member of the community, as a member of the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Great. Okay, that being said, the next item is, we're going to adjourn and sign documents. Can I have a motion to adjourn and sign documents?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
And Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Stay safe.